It's about to start.
Recording in progress.
Recording in progress.
Welcome, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the February 6th Planning Commissioner Meeting. It is 6 o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we have a determination of quorum, please?
We can. Michael Flick?
Here.
Pat Phillips?
Here.
Dan Lazarewski?
Here.
Rob Pierce?
Here.
Francine Doncic?
Here.
Kate Nelson?
Here.
And Linda Kennedy? We can't hear you, Linda. Linda, can you hear us?
She's not showing up.
Here, hold on. She's not hearing us, but she is online. Give me a second. There we go. Linda, can you hear me?
Now I can hear you.
Okay, go ahead. We've taken a quorum, so go ahead and say you're here.
I'm here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you all please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
This is a pledge of nice and sacred fairness to the public with this end and education under God, as well, the pretty justice draw.
Thank you. Can we please have ethics law announcement?
This meeting will be held in the County Commission chambers and via Zoom webinar. For those of you who wish to participate via Zoom, please log into the Zoom webinar at the link that's found on the first page of the notice of meeting and agenda for today. Or alternatively, you can join by typing zoom.us into your computer browser, clicking "Join a Meeting" on the Zoom website, and entering meeting ID 842-7265-9406. You can also join by telephone only by dialing 1-669-900-9128 and entering meeting ID 842-7265-9406 and pressing pound. For those of you wishing to provide public comment via Zoom, you can log into the Zoom webinar at the above, at the link that's on the first page of the agenda, and utilize the raise hand feature during any public comment period. To provide public comment via telephone only, you can press star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute and unmute. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the appeal procedure, please, Mr. Lloyd?
Most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and qualify as an agreed person or party, you may appeal in writing within 10 calendar days from the date the decision being appealed is reduced to writing, filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed, in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-3610 for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open up general public comment. Do we have any general public comment?
I have no general public comment in chambers, and I have no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, we'll close general public comment, move on to item number six, approval of the February 6th 24 agenda. Can I get a motion to approve unless anybody has?
Chair Pierce, Commissioner Doncic, I move to approve the agenda. Commissioner Doncic.
All right, this is Rob. For the record, I'll second it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, that passes. Thank you. Moving on to seven, approval of January 2nd draft minutes. Has everybody had a chance to look at that? Do we have any changes? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Commissioner Lazarewski moved to approve the January 2nd draft minutes as written.
Commissioner Doncic, I'll second that.
All right, we have motion and second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Brings us on to item number eight for the public hearing abandonment case number WAB23-0008 for Kilment. Mr. Lloyd, can you please announce?
Yeah, for hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve an abandonment of Washoe County's interest in a 15-foot wide portion of a 33-foot government patent easement for access in public utilities along the southern boundary of the parcel at 15660 Fawn Lane, APN 15023202. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Planner Julie Olander.
All right, Julie, floor is yours. Thank you. Can we turn up her microphone, please?
I'm turning it up right now.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Julie. Hold on. There you go.
Okay. This is a request to abandon Washoe County's interest in a 15-foot wide portion of a 33-foot government easement on Fawn Lane, on a parcel on Fawn Lane. And here's, and, oops, on the left, you have sort of an overview. Fawn Lane is off of Mount Rose, and then on the right, you have a closer view of the parcel itself. So the portion that they're asking to abandon is on the northern, southern portion of the property. There's a 33-foot easement there, and they would like to abandon 15 feet of that easement. The request is primarily to enable the property owner to have more usable property. So I just want to show how these easements are. A lot of you know this. These easements are out there off of Mount Rose. They have this 33 feet around all the parcels, because at the time that these parcels were created, it was unclear how the access would be for these parcels. So the parcels that have the blue around them, this is, and then the highlighted blue, that is where the parcel that we're speaking of tonight is located. And then you can see where the 33 feet is, or all the way around, all three of those parcels, or four of those parcels. And then to the south, it's the same layout. You have an easement going all the way around. So that this easement will allow access to all these parcels. However, at this time, the easement is not, this parcel is accessed from Fawn Lane. They don't use the easement. And then the parcels to the east, to the right, they, I should go back. Maybe just show, oops. No, I need one more, sorry. I thought I had a picture in here. So this shows it a little bit better. So the parcels to the east use the easement to the north, and they don't use that southern easement at all. And then the parcels south of where the parcel is located, they use the easement on the other side of the property. So I will go back to this slide again, and you can see. So the parcels to the south, they use that highlighted green area to access the parcels, and the parcels in the blue, they use the northern easement to access their properties. And then the parcel in question uses Fawn Lane. It was pointed out to me that there is a fence along the easement that needs to be removed, so I'd like to add one condition. Any structures or fencing will be removed from the easement area prior to recording of the order of the abandonment. The abiding properties were noticed. I've received one email that's in your staff packet, and then I also received a phone call for the parcel to the east that they were asking about how the parcels to the east would be accessed. There was no neighborhood meeting because this is a neighborhood, this is an abandonment. It does not require a neighborhood meeting. But the parcels outlined in blue are the parcels that were noticed. Various agencies reviewed the application, and their comments are included in the staff report. Agencies with conditions are included in the conditions of approval. Staff can make all the findings as explained in my staff report, and I provide a possible motion. And I do want to point out that the motion needs to be made, including that amended condition. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. And I believe the applicant is here.
Is the applicant present? Would they like to make a presentation?
I don't believe they have a presentation. They're just available for questions.
Okay, all right.
So if anybody has questions, you can ask myself or the applicant.
Okay, let's go to public comment first, and then we'll come back to you.
I have no public comment in chambers, and I have no hands raised on Zoom.
All right, we'll close the public comment. We'll bring you back to the board. Do we have any questions for Ms. Olander? No questions, no comments. Okay, I'll entertain a motion if we don't, if we have any discussion. If we don't have any discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Go ahead.
Commissioner Lazarewski, I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approve abandonment case number WAB23-0008 for Richard and Cynthia Clement, with the amended conditions included in Exhibit A to this matter, having made all three findings in accordance with Washoe County Code, Section 110.806.20.
All right. This is Commissioner Doncic. I second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that brings us on to 9B. Do we have any disclosures on this before we get going?
Chair, this is Commissioner Nelson. The applicant, X-Lin Company, as my private work with Incline Village General Improvement District, we actually do, oh, am I on the wrong one?
This is the daughter of school.
Sorry. He actually has worked for IVEGID and on some projects that I've worked on. However, this will not impact my independent decision-making for this item.
Okay.
Okay. And just, Commissioner Nelson, just to clarify, you mentioned he. Can you just indicate who you're speaking about?
Nick X-Lin with X-Lin and Company.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And for clarifications, this is amendment of condition case number WAC23-0014 for the Lake Tahoe School and WSUP170004. And Mr. Lloyd, could you announce that before we get going on that, please? Thank you for the disclosure.
There it is. All right, Trevor Lloyd, Planning Manager with Washoe County Planning, filling in for Senior Planner Courtney Wyke, who was unable to attend this hearing tonight. For hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve an abandonment, I'm sorry, I was reading the wrong one. For hearing, discussion, and possible action to approve an amendment of conditions for the Lake Tahoe School for special use permit case number WSUP170004 to increase the student enrollment from 220 to 250 students.
Okay. Mr. Lloyd, the floor is yours.
All right, I'll give a little bit of background. This school goes back quite a few years. Just so you're all aware of the evolution of the school, it was originally approved by the Planning Commission for a pre-K through ninth grade school for up to 150 students back in August of 2002. Then in September of 2006, the Planning Commission approved an amendment of conditions to increase the pre-K enrollment from 15 up to 25 students. In September of 2013, the Planning Commission approved an amendment of conditions to increase the pre-K from 25 students up to 40 students, and a total enrollment from 150 to 200 students. Then in May of 2017, the Planning Commission approved a new special use permit to allow the construction of a 13,900 square foot multipurpose building. That approval was an appeal to the County Commission in July of that year, and they upheld the Planning Commission's decision. Then in 2022, a minor deviation was approved to allow a 10% expansion of the number of students to increase the enrollment from 200 students up to 220 students. So now the applicants are coming before the Planning Commission as enrollment continues to increase, to ask for an amendment of conditions to expand the enrollment by up to 30 students to allow for total enrollment up to 250 students. The amendment of conditions would be for, to amend condition 1G sub 61 of special use permit SUP170004, and that, as I mentioned, would increase, or would allow an increase up to 250 students total. The application was sent out to 19 agencies for review. Staff received three comments back requesting conditions. The conditions came from the Northern Nevada Public Health Engineering Division and the North Lake Tahoe Fire Protection District. Their conditions are included as Exhibit A attached to the staff report. The noticing went out in compliance with code and statutory noticing requirements. A total of 149 public notices were sent out to separate property owners. There were two public comments received in opposition of the proposed expansion, and staff believes that the conditions will satisfy or alleviate the concerns of the surrounding neighbors. Staff is able to make all of the findings required for the original staff report. That included consistency, improvement, site suitability, issuance not detrimental, and effect on a military installation. And staff offers the following motion for your consideration, and I'm available for your questions at this time.
Wonderful, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this?
I have no public comment in chambers.
I have no public.
I have no public comment online. No hands raised on Zoom.
All right. So we'll bring you back to the board. Do we have any questions for Mr. Lloyd, or any discussion for the board? If we don't, I'll entertain a motion, but go ahead.
Commissioner Lazarewski, for Mr. Lloyd, concerning the improvements, it's noted in the staff report that there is a requirement to have one parking space per employee for this use in this zone. They state that they're not intending to add any employees despite significantly increasing the enrollment in the school. Do we have any check upon that process? Like, if two years from now, they realize, oh, we added 30 students, we actually need to add two more teachers, is there any go back to add parking to support those teachers, or no?
If the, if the parking is not in compliance, yeah, we would require that they, they bring it up to conformance with our, with our code. Yeah, currently, the application indicates that no additional staff will be needed. The applicants are here, they can confirm that. But if, in the event that we do find that there are additional staff, and that the park, additional parking is required, we will ask, we will require that the applicant bring the parking up to current code standards.
Okay. The other issue that I saw with regard to availability of improvements was traffic. The applicant's own traffic study engineer noted that the entrance and exit from, or the entrance into the parking lot was consistent potentially with the need for a dedicated right-hand turn coming eastbound, dedicated left-hand turn coming westbound. They noted a couple of mitigating issues about perhaps it wasn't needed enough to justify the cost. Did Washoe County Engineering have any comments that maybe didn't make it in the report to see about their consideration of the sufficiency of the parking lot entry?
Well, we did receive comments from Washoe County Engineering, and they did not reference the need for any improvements in terms of the right-hand turn lane. Keep in mind that this also was, the application was provided to NDOT also, and we didn't hear any comments from NDOT as well. Thank you.
I guess I should have asked, does the applicant want to make a presentation? I'm sorry about that. I...
No, absolutely no worries whatsoever. It was a beautiful drive down here today. My name is Nick X-Lin from X-Lin and Company, and it was a beautiful drive. The snow was great, best skiing I've had all year last weekend, so it's great to be with you this evening. And, you know, I don't want to, you know, I think we're, you know, ready to move forward, so I'm just going to touch on a couple of things really quickly. Really the things that you didn't see within the, kind of the presentation, all those improvements is, I've been really fortunate to be with the Lake Tahoe School since the beginning. And what's been really amazing, especially in a world so absence of community, especially for kids, that it really has developed and inspired a sense of community within Incline Village. And so it's a great place for kids. It's a great place for kids to congregate. The last time I was there was actually Book Day, and it was a really just positive experience. Kids, experiences, environmentalism. It's a really great educational place. And fundamentally, really what this is being done for is to ensure siblings can enjoy school with their, with their brothers and sisters. And so, again, I'm just going to go through this very quickly. This has all been touched on. Again, all been touched on. And so, you know, going to the traffic analysis, and I think those were good questions. NDOT along the 50 corridor and 28 is considering a lot of changes, and I think they're quite a while out before they kind of figure out what they want to do in that space. And really, just wanted to kind of touch on this. These are just some of the traffic mitigation measures the school is going to implore. Traffic officers, traffic lanes, staggered drop-off and pickup times, so that way you're not having everybody come and go at the same time. And then all siblings in that reality will be released together to ensure the minimum amount of trips possible while the parking lot will be restriped. Just kind of touching on the benefits of kind of the strategies that relates to siblings. And then, you know, really just want to thank everyone for their, for your time today. Available for any questions. Josh Palmer with the school is also here, and he's available to answer any questions as it relates to school activities, how things move forward. But again, it's an amazing community. We're looking to expand the population and enrollment, excuse me, so siblings can join and continue that growth of community in Incline Village. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Gusterson, do I need to ask for public comment again?
No, I would recommend that.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Can we, do we have any public comment on this now that the applicant's made his presentation?
I do have one hand raised on Zoom, but I have no public comment in chambers. Annette, please state your first and last name for the record, and unmute, please.
Hello, my name is Annette Polifka. I'm a resident of Incline Village, and my, I love the Lake Tahoe School. I love what you guys do for the community, et cetera. My concern is the safety for making a left-hand turn while there is, while there is the school pickup, so the visibility is decreased. And also, if you are, if a car is trying to enter the parking lot, you're stuck in traffic for about 20 minutes before you can get to the other side of the parking lot if you're not picking up your child from school. So those are my two concerns. And also, I believe that the striping is incorrect because there's a white dotted line versus, so there's the possibility for, for changing lanes, which I think can also be dangerous as well. So, thank you.
That looks like the only public comment on Zoom.
So that's it? No more public comment?
No more public comment.
Okay, we'll close the public comment, bring it back to the board again, sorry. For questions, go ahead.
I have just two concerns on this when I noticed some of the comments. The lighting and the landscaping that have been affected from the past, and I just wanted to find out if there was any update on those conditions.
Yeah, definitely. Both those issues have been addressed, and I think what was really remarkable, actually doing a lot of planning projects, in particular with Incline Village, is even in one of the comment letters received today, I think they acknowledged that they were able to work with the school to get their questions and issues addressed with the landscaping and with the lighting. And so all of those meet code, kind of as referenced in the staff report. And I think really was an exercise of kind of good neighborly relationships. When the call came through, you know, they, they worked and solved the problem. So all of that's been addressed.
Any more questions? Discussion? Okay, then I'll open it up for a motion. Do we have a motion?
Commissioner Lazarewski, I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approve amended amendment of the conditions case number WAC23-0014 in order to amend the conditions approval for special use permit case number WSUP17-0004 for the Lake Tahoe School and increase student enrollment from 220 to 250 students with the amended conditions included as Exhibit A to this matter, having made all five findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code, Section 110.810.30.
Commissioner Doncic, I second that motion.
All right. Chair, Commissioner Kennedy has her hand raised. I don't know if this is the time to interrupt, but perhaps we should hear her speak before we vote?
Sure.
I was going to second the motion.
Oh, okay. Your hand was raised, so I didn't know if you wanted to.
That's all right. We already got it.
Thank you, Linda.
I was just going to second.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to 8C, which is a master plan amendment case number WMPA23-0005 and regulatory zone amendment case number WRZA23-0007 for 3180 Makayla Way. Mr. Lloyd, can you please announce that?
Once again, Trevor Lloyd, Planning Manager with Washoe County Planning, filling in for Senior Planner Courtney Wyke. This is for hearing, discussion, and possible action to, one, adopt an amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan, South Valley's Master Plan Land Use Map, Appendix B, maps, to change the master plan designation from rural to rural residential on one parcel totaling 17.65 acres. And two, subject to final approval of the associated master plan amendment by the Board of County Commissioners and a finding of conformance with the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan by the regional planning authorities, recommend adoption of an amendment to the South Valley's Regulatory Zone Map to change the regulatory zone from general rural to medium density rural on the same 17.65 acre parcel. And if approved, authorize the chair to sign the resolution to that effect.
Okay, Mr. Lloyd, your floor is yours.
No disclaimers.
What, oh, do we have any disclaimers? Sorry.
Yes, Chairman, we do.
Okay.
Commissioner Doncic, I want it on the record that I am acquaintanced with the property owner, Mr. O'Connor. I know him through Washoe County Conversion Response Team, but I feel that that will not, we've not had any discussions. I feel that will not impact my decision for tonight.
Jen Gusterson, for the record, just to follow up question. Do you have any sort of close personal relationship or familial relationship with Mr. O'Connor?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, more, okay, go ahead, Mr. Lloyd.
All right, thank you. This property is located at the eastern terminus of Makayla Way on the west side, just west of Interstate I-580 in Washoe Valley. The subject property, as indicated, is 17.6 acres. It currently has a master plan land use of rural and a regulatory zone of general rural. The surrounding properties are open space to the east, general rural to the north and south, and high-density rural to the west. The subject property is currently vacant, and the immediate, immediately surrounding properties are developed with single-family residential homes, which range in size, the lots which range in size from 2.5 acres to approximately nine acres. As you can see on the overhead, the applicant is asking to change the master plan land use from rural to rural residential, which is consistent with the properties immediately to the west. It doesn't really show up too clearly on this map, but that is the same color as the properties immediately west of this subject site. The applicant is also asking to change the regulatory zone from general rural, which is one unit per 40 acres, to medium density rural, which is one unit per five acres. That would result in a maximum allowable density of three lots total on the subject property. The properties to the west, the color orange, are designated high-density rural, which is one unit per two and a half. which is one unit per two and a half acres. Uh, so the subject property will still maintain a lower density than the other properties uh to the west. The surrounding um general rural properties to the north and to the south, as well as the uh property to the east, which is open space, those are all publicly owned properties. Uh, the proposal maintains the vision statement of the South Valley's planning area as the proposed amendment will result in a minimal intensification of the current land use and will not result in a negative impact on the natural resources or the scenic protections. Also, the proposed amendment will promote the designed uh or uh desired, I should say, pattern of orderly physical growth by maintaining a rural residential development, uh, which is consistent throughout the South Valley's planning area. Uh, staff performed a comprehensive analysis of the population, housing and land use elements to ensure uh consistency with the uh the new master plan, uh, as well as the regulatory zone amendment with the updated envisioned Washoe twenty forty master plan. Staff has determined that the proposed amendments are consistent with the applicable policies of the new Washoe County Master Plan. Additionally, staff has determined that the amendments are in conformance with the character of the rural communities and that there is sufficient water available to accommodate uh the future rural development of the property. Uh, the neighbor, uh, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting onsite um of the subject property on uh April twenty third of twenty twenty-three. Uh, the applicant indicated that uh there were concerns raised regarding increased traffic and the use of McHale Way easement as the primary access for the property. Uh, staff is able to make all applicable findings of the uh for the master plan amendment, as well as the applicable findings uh for the regulatory zone amendment, and offers the following motion uh for your consideration. I should say motions. That's uh for the ma- master plan amendment and the regulatory zone amendment. Um, the applicant is available to, I believe he has a presentation as well. Um, and I can answer any questions that you have at this time.
Okay, if the applicant would like to make a presentation, you're welcome to do so, sir.
Hello, my name is Art O'Connor and I am the trustee for the Arthur C. O'Connor Junior Share of the Elizabeth G. O'Connor Trust, the owner of the land that is the subject of this action. I have been working to parcel this land since twenty fourteen. I'm a registered land surveyor and a licensed civil engineer. The subject parcel was created by a previous owner, John Serpa, through a series of parcel maps and records of survey. It is bordered on the north. Whoops, come back here. Oops, too many. It is bordered on the north. Where is the light button? Uh-huh, maybe this one. Anyway, bordered on the north and the west by N dot property that is part of the I five eighty right away. It is bordered on the south by B L M uh that was purchased from John Serpa. It is assumed that B L M, it was assumed at that time that B L M would have purchased all of the land and the county master planned all the land as rural and zone it general rule. But B L M did not want land uh north of the quarter section line that is my south boundary. All the adjacent private land is master planned, rural residential and zoned high-density rural. I am asking for the same designations. I am the last private land east of the section line in this area. However, the state now requires a minimum five-acre lot for development with onsite disposal and a individual well. Hence, I can only use medium-density rural M D R. The properties surrounding me have lot sizes less than nine acres. Okay, starting from the top is a land owned by a outfit called Ronco, and it's just under nine acres. Then we come down to the uh str- uh gun and strew properties, which are five point nine and five point six acres. South of Strew are mostly two and a half acre lots. On the other side of Old U S three ninety-five, starting from the top, we have three point eight, two point five, two point seven, two point five, two point nine, two point nine, four, gash at three point four, two point three, and actually a one point two acre lot. All of these are less than four acres. Located uh about up uh where you see the uh uh just about where you see the gun house uh on Old U S three ninety-five is the Over Monument. This is what it looked like, and it monuments the town that was there in the eighteen sixties, before Nevada became a state. Over was founded to house workers at the ore mill, which was actually located all the way down by Bellevue, south of here. Come on, there we go. Okay, so here's the history of Over. So it is first mentioned in eighteen sixty-two, when the government went through and did a G L O survey. Then in March of eighteen sixty-four, a map for, can I have the Elmo, please? For the town of Over was recorded in the county of Washoe and the territory of Nevada. Have the. And this is it. You can see back in eighteen sixty-four, they could record in color. Look at that, red. And this says Douglas, 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 Douglas owned all these lands up here. This is the second page of the map. Town of Over. Okay, so back to the computer. There we go. Okay, here's the town of Over laid out. So you can see that a portion of it was actually under my land. I actually have about six lots from the town of Over that were owned by Douglas. Note that Over was not staked out using true north, but was used staked out using magnetic north and tilted fifteen degrees, the variation. I asked Bill Whitney if I could do a B A B L A to recover those lots. And he said, nice try, but I had to do what I'm doing now. I tried the same thing with Trevor. And guess what? He said the same thing. So uh rats, here I am. Anyway, so uh uh while you are northbound on I five eighty, you may have seen the falling down stone structure on the east side of I five eighty just before the Davis Creek Park exit. That is Douglas's home. It is not the mill, built down in Bellevue. That home is at least a hundred and sixty years old, probably the oldest structure in Washoe County. Okay, so here's what I propose to do. You can see there are three lots that I propose to put in, one at the top, two and three. Lots two and three would use the existing easement. The easement has that little blue line coming in on it. And the property to the north is Gun and the property to the south is Strew. Okay, so in, there seems to be some confusion about my rights concerning the existing easement. When the R O S forty-one eighty was filed in January of two thousand and three, there was no easement. Note that the parcels that included my land had twenty-seven point two seven acres, but we were under the old land use plan system, not the current master plan and zoning system. I do not know the land use designation. I haven't been able to find that out. But surely the county would not have approved a boundary line adjustment that created a lot smaller than that allowed. In March of two thousand and three, whoops, one more, come back. The easement was created, and you can see it uh with the write-up in there where it it um uh with a little written-in stuff. Here it is. In um twenty fifteen, I filed parcel map fifty-two oh seven, creating all the parcels now owned by Gun and Strew. On that map, I created some notes, which you see on the second page over there on the side, that modified the easement. In particular, note three says McHale Way is a private access and utilities, public and private, easement for the benefit of A P N oh six, that's me, and the two parcels being created by this map only. McHale Way will use the existing driveway access. That's the easement that I showed you on that previous map from Old Highway three ninety-five. Use of this easement by m- my parcel is limited to not more than two new lots. Okay, I have uh uh I would like to be friends, not enemies, with my future neighbors. And so I have offered them several solutions, from selling them all the land, where I want to build my dream home, to selling them land for the two parcels that would use the easement, to relocating the easement. They have rejected all my offers. Here's the most recent offer. Now, this is, this is the D that created the easement. And I'd show it to you just so you can see that there were no restrictions. And it's three pages. I wouldn't want you to think I'm hiding anything. And so here's the second page. It's just a legal description. And the last page is a little map that went with it. Okay, here's the proposed, latest proposed sol- solution. I offered to move as a land surveyor, move the easement down to the Strew's very south boundary. I would pay for everything that it costs, like the fencing, any buildings that have to be moved. I offered to pay for all of it. You can see that. So, um. I, the third parcel, would use an access from the B L M uh that is not being used by when they rent it out to the cattle. It's actually high land that's up above everything and just full of sagebrush and no grass. It's fenced off. And then we have my future home. So you, all the roof, most of the roofs point to the south. It's going to be a solar off-grid house with Tesla's uh roofing and uh there are power wall batteries. The house we build out of insulated concrete forms, which has superior thermal resistance and sound deadening. I will not hear the freeway, even though it's that close, or the wind for which Washoe Valley is famous. In other words, my dream home. Please approve my request, request and let me build my home. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's open it up to public comment. Do we have any public comment?
If I, if I got any questions? I'd just like to clarify something with counsel first. Um, the topic of this hearing is nothing to do with the access easement and nothing to do with details of any potential future parcel remap. This is entirely about zoning and master plan amendment, correct?
Correct. This is a request to change the master plan land use designation that the county has established and the regulatory zone designation. Any um, you know, there's no potential parcel map before you that would occur downstream by the Parcel Map Review Committee. Um, so you're literally looking at, you know, in your analysis, you're looking at the findings under the master plan and the findings under the regulatory zone.
Okay, so before we get to the public comment, I just want to make clear. Uh, we just heard a bunch of stuff about easement that's totally not material to the question before us, and we are not considering that stuff. So please don't feel it necessary to try to rebut anything immaterial that was just presented. Thank you.
Okay, this time let's open up public comment. Do we have any public comment?
We do. I have Jason St- Strew. Jason, please state your first and last name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jason Strew and I live at thirty-one seven McHale Way with my wife, Rachel Hahn. Tonight I'm here to express our strong opposition to the proposed master plan and zoning amendments before you today. We became proud owners of our property in May twenty twenty-two and since then we've called our home. We've previously lived across the street at fifteen Marinatha Road for nine years, establishing a longstanding connection to the community. We lived in the original Gus Bundy's cabin there. The property at thirty eight, wait, thirty-one eighty McHale Way where the proposed changes are targeted has served primarily as a pasture for cows until it was purchased by Mr. O'Connor in the fall of twenty twenty-two. Our opposition to the proposed change centers around the fact that the access to three one eight, thirty-one eighty McHale Way relies on the easement through our parcel. Tonight I'd like to present a brief overview that illustrates the original tent of the easement and why we believe the proposed use would place an undue burden on it. So. Let's see. So as you saw, this is the parcel in question. It's bounded by N dot to the north, uh, five eighty to the east, B L M to the south and private property. Uh, we live at the blue star right there. The purple dot is where we used to live and the green line is the easement in question. Um, this is, oh, sorry, that was the map that set the easement, a twenty-foot easement with a five-foot utility easement. There's also an equestrian easement on the south end of our parcel that we use to access B L M lands. Um, basically like arguing that this is, should be rezoned is that it was originally miszoned. Um, from the previous sides, you can see the property is landlocked and remote and is the quintessential definition of a rural property based on its characteristics. At such, any change of the zoning is a potential subdivision as Mr. Art expressed would be an overburden to the original tent. So here it is right here. Um, there's the equestrian easement. There's a red star is the lone gate that the guns use to access their horse pasture right there. Um, here's the easement looking south, right off Old three ninety-five. Uh, the gun's house is on the left, our house is on the right. The the bedroom that we sleep in is the one with the three windows on the house right there on the right. Uh, as we get past the driveway, you can see it basically just turns into a pasture right there. Um, here is my wife and her sister with two of our horses. Um, on the easement for scale, you can see it's not a very big easement. My wife riding next to it and um our dog and two goats on it as well, too. Um, I mean, I think you saw what Mr. O'Connor's plans are. We're not trying to prevent him from building his dream home. We just don't want it to get subdivided and be overburdened with additional traffic. Um, thank you so much for considering my comments and appreciate your time.
I have Derek Gunn. Derek, please state your first and last name for the record and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Derek Gunn. I live at uh thirty-one thirty Old U S Highway three ninety-five as uh Jason Strew just showed you on the map. Um, Mr. O'Connor, uh, not long after we moved in, uh, little over a year and a half ago, give or take. First off, have no uh to uh say what, you know, Jason said, uh, Mr. O'Connor wants to build his dream home. Everyone uh should have that dream and I I wish him well in that. Um, this map was created by Mr. O'Connor for George Steele, who owned all of this property, Jason ours and Mr. O'Connor's property now. Uh, to correct what uh Mr. O'Connor said uh in uh note number three on the parcel map from two thousand and fifteen, it is not more, it is limited to not more than two single-family residences. Uh, not two uh, two parcels, uh, which uh Mr. O'Connor said. Um, as an example, uh, family house and a mother-in-law quarters or, you know, a guest house, et cetera. Um, the access to this, I understand what y'all just said. Um, the access to this is is not suitable for uh what he is proposing. Um, it is uh, it is based on where this property is, with our property, with our fence, with the neighbor's fence, with horses, with other things that we have that are right up against this road to the only access to get to it. It should be kept as low density in in our humble opinion, based on how you, the access to. opinion, based on how you, the access that you have to get there. That is how it was originally created in 2015. Again, as Art said, by his, by his map, for the owner of the property before he sold, parceled it off, the 17 acres to Art, and then our five-plus acres and the five acres We, again, we have no ill will towards Mr. O'Connor whatsoever, we don't wanna hold him back from doing whatever he would like to do, but this property is just, is not suitable as it sits with our property and the other property, in our opinion, to, to be subdivided and to be zoned medium density, to have a bunch more houses on it. That's not just because we don't want a bunch of neighbors, or whatever. We bought our property, Jason bought his property, not to speak for him, I'm sorry, but I know his, his thoughts, based on that there, that we knew that 17 acres was there, we knew that somebody owned it, we had not met Mr. O'Connor yet, we knew what the map, what the parcel map said from 2015. Again, it is not more than two single-family, or two single-family residences. Example, house and a mother-in-law quarters, et cetera, on that property, on 17 acres. Two houses, a bunch of cows, and some horses, and that's it. That's what we bought it, that's what we understood, and we believe that's what it should stay. Thank you very much for your time.
I have Amanda Gunn. Amanda, please state your first and last name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hello, I am Amanda Gunn, for the record. My husband just spoke to you, and I just, you know, women kinda do this better, so I'll just go over things a little bit. I know that, I heard what you said about the easement, and I understand the position on that, but I think you still have to consider access as zoning, right? If you're gonna change the zoning, how are people gonna get there? And I think it does play a part in to this situation, as Jason showed you where our, where our pasture is, our one and only access to our pasture. And we have kids, and I have a nephew, and they ride horses, and it's a concern. It is a concern for additional traffic down that area, and I think, you know, adding, it's one thing to build another home there, and another mother-in-law's quarter versus three. I think we all know in today's time how many moms, especially me, like to shop on Amazon. That's more Amazon deliveries, UPS deliveries, and all the things that come with it, on top of buses and everything. I work from home, so I see things all the time, and the old US 395 that we sit on is also, when, you know, it becomes a truck thoroughfare when the valley is closed because of wind. That happens a lot. And then, when the weather's bad, that happens a lot. So, what does that mean? More traffic means more stopping, means there might be turns for trying to get into left-hand turn lanes there. And that's scary to me. People fly down that way, and if we were to put in another turn and more traffic turning left there that already, than already exist, I think that's a huge, huge issue. And then, I would, I don't know if this matters, because I've never done this before, but I know on the plan, when Mr. O'Connor had his neighborhood meeting, I was only one of my, myself, my husband, his realtor, and his realtor's friend that was from out of town, we were the only ones at the meeting. We were never offered a comment card, or given the opportunity, or told that we could comment, or we would have. We said a lot more things to him than what was said, and he has made other proposals for the easement, and it's been to move Jason's barn, because that's, you know, or we just put in a brand-new $200,000 barn, and he wants to take the back of it off and use an easement over there. So, it's not that we're saying, no, we're not gonna help you at all. His plans have been absolutely unrealistic. We want to help him, we want him to have his dream home, but not at the expense of everyone else. Thank you.
I have Philip McCauley. Please state your first and last name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Philip McCauley, representing Ronco at 3,000 Old Virginia South. I'd like to echo what Jason and Amanda and Derek have said, and Art did reach out to me about putting an easement and taking off a chunk of my property there, too, which I told them we're not interested in. We've also taken a look at the easement on the McKailaway, and it does say for two houses, not for two parcels. So, we're just west of this whole fence line, if you look at that map again. So, we're, we're not for that either. When we bought that place, we went ahead and checked what was there also, and we'd like to stay that way. Thank you.
I have Wayne Barlow. Please state your first and last name, and you have, for the record, you have three
Hi, my name's Wayne Barlow. I used to own 3055 Old US 395, and when I purchased the property in 1992, or 1997, I was told that the well on 3055 during an extended drought period went dry for a period of time, which was a month or two months. I was not given a definite date or time, but it was in that time period. And back then, there was like six houses between the west side of 395 and one house on the east side. And now, there's 11, and he's talking, or there's actually 14, and now, he's talking about three more, and so that would be 17 houses. And there already is, I think, an issue with the well water, because of the groundwater, you know, using so much more groundwater is gonna create an issue in itself. And so, I feel that there, at the very least, there should become, sign a study to determine whether these properties should actually exist at all because of the groundwater. So, there should be some kind of a groundwater study done. Otherwise, we could all run out of water, because it has happened once before. That's all I have. Thank you.
I have Denise Barlow. Please state your first and last name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, I'm Denise Barlow, and I am having a hard time trying to figure out exactly how many acres is minimum for MDR. Could somebody please tell me that? Because I'm looking at a regulatory zone development standard, and it says four acres. It says four acres, and this gentleman here earlier stated that it was five acres, so I would like for somebody to clarify that for me.
It's a state requirement, five acres minimum overrides local.
Okay, we can't have people from the audience speaking, because it's not picked up on the record, so ma'am, just continue your public comments, and if the board has a question, they can ask after.
Okay, because that would determine, if it's four acres, then Mr. O'Connell could indeed resurvey, resurvey that property and create four parcels. And that's my fear, because right now, it's supposed to be two parcels and two buildings. If he's able to create it into four-acre parcels, then we have the potential of four homes. That's, I think, unreasonable.
I have Karen Gash. Please state your first and last name for the record, you have three minutes.
I'm Karen Gash, and we're located across the highway from the proposed zoning change, directly opposite McKailaway, so we're on the west side. We bought our property in 1969, and until 2017, we had pasture land across from us. Then, one house was built, followed in 2020 with another house, then with added sheds, barns, corrals. In late 2022, Mr. O'Connell purchased the property, knowing it was limited to a single-family residence. But now, he wants to change the zoning to expand it to three residences, in my mind, a small subdivision. If this passes, it will have taken only six years to change the landscape from my porch. From open space to five residences, to me, this is rapid housing development for a supposed rural area. This will change the entire feel of the needed area, with increased traffic, as well as with more barns and sheds that will surely follow the residences. And the reality is, the area will become more suburban than rural. Please respect the original zoning, it was the correct one, and deny the proposed change for higher density, which will impact the rural character of our neighborhood. Seeing a lot of changes out there, and I think this envisioned project, the title of that, is important, but when you're envisioning it, you can be visionary as well. Don't just think it, do it.
I have Roger Gash. Roger, please state your first and last name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Roger Gash, we live across the road, my wife Karen. This is a cover of an extensive draft by our county, Washoe Valley Scenic Byway Corridor Management Plan, a recreation, open space, and wildlife haven. That is why we oppose this zoning change. It does not conform to the county's intent for the Washoe Valley, evidenced by this draft, similar documents, and basically the master plan. The subject parcel was once a portion of the large John Casey Ranch, which included much of Washoe Valley, now in federal ownership for the enjoyment of the public. In fact, the subject property, as earlier mentioned, borders federal land on the south, federal land east across I-80, state land on the north with Davis Creek Park close by. Mr. O'Connor, who wishes to downgrade this current zoning, was the surveyor of the record parcel map 5207A that included the land he subsequently purchases, purchased. He now wishes to subdivide. However, Mr. O'Connor's surveyed and recorded parcel map includes the following note specific to the subject land, which has already been mentioned, but I'll mention it again, accessory partial number such and such, is limited to not more than two single-family residences. This parcel was zoned for one resident, then, and still is now, not two, and not three, requested by Mr. O'Connor. He knew prior to purchase what he was buying, a single-residence property, allowing three residences ignores the self-stated of-record limitation. With this in mind, I urge the county to complete a land title due diligence prior to making a decision. We have provided other reasons for denial in objections emailed to Courtney Weech, plus a meeting with her on June 5, 2023.
I have no further public comment in chambers, and I have no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, last chance for public comment. Okay, we're gonna close public comment, bring it back to the board, questions, go ahead.
Commissioner Phillips with a couple of questions. Clarification, I think this can be either from the applicant or from staff. The area to the west is high-density, and it is pretty much developed. Okay, the second part is, I don't see anything in the existing motions that come before us tonight that mention parcels or easement. Is that correct?
Mr. Lloyd, can you also verbally answer the previous questions from the commissioner as well for the record?
I may need, I may need the commissioner to repeat that, but, yeah, through, through the chair, thank, thank you for the question, Commissioner Phillips. Regarding the, the number of lots proposed, or the nature of the easement, that would all be determined and required information at the time that an application for a parcel map is submitted to Washoe County. It's really not part of the application before you today. What is before you today is a determination of whether or not the master plan and the zoning are appropriate at this location. And the previous question, I'm...
Just to clarify that, the land, the parcels to the west are high-density?
High-density rural, yes, under the rural category. And, and most of them are developed, I don't know if all of them are, the applicant might be able to answer that better than I could.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a question to staff. What is, what is the yield today, and what would be the yield, the maximum yield after this proposed change?
Are we talking...
Assuming, well, obviously, they'll have to submit a parcel map to do all of this stuff, but I'm just, I'm trying to find out what type of yield problem we're dealing with here.
Thank you again through the chair. Commissioner Flick, is, are you referring to the, the annual water availability? Is that what you're talking about when you're talking about the yield, or what's...
No, I'm talking about the lot yield.
Oh, the, the total number of lots?
Yes.
Okay, this is a good time to answer the question also that was raised by the member of the public. The, there is a little bit of confusion regarding the minimum lot size and the maximum density, all right? The maximum density is one dwelling unit per five acres. The minimum lot size, however, is four acres, and I understand there is some confusion there, and let me, let me explain that if I can. The, the density determines the total number of lots based on the acreage that can be developed. And so, in this case, with an MDR property, medium-density rural, that's one unit per five acres, the applicant would be required to have a minimum of 10 acres in order to create two lots. If they had eight acres, he could not create two lots. So, he could create two lots with 10 acres, the, the smallest lot size could be four acres, and then the larger would have, would be six, in a nutshell, that, that's the distinction. I, I understand there was some confusion with, with the minimum lot size and density. But given that the, the acreage on the site, the 17 acres, assuming, you know, access and all of that, the maximum total number of lots that could be created with MDR is, is three, three lots on the subject property.
Three lots?
With the zoning, based on the zoning, yes.
All right, and those three lots can have one dwelling unit each, and they cannot be split in the future?
Not with the current, not with the zoning of MDR, it could not be further split. Now, I need to clarify also, what we're talking about is one primary residence on each, each legal lot that's created. That means one primary residence and a maximum of one accessory dwelling that, that could also be established, and that's essentially a county-wide, yeah, issue.
You have to have your own, the primary has to provide the power for the auxiliary, 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 you know what I mean? Okay, so we're talking about three residences?
With the proposed request, that's the maximum, yes.
All right, and any future request? How many?
Would have to come back before this commission and go through the process all over again.
I know that, but how many could potentially be made?
I, 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 I don't know, I think given, given the fact that this property and all of this area is regulated by the regional plan, you're limited to five-acre zoning, essentially. You could not be reduced beyond that. Now, the, there are some, the, the current HDR zoning is essentially grandfathered, those neighboring properties, but for this subject property, five-acre zoning, MDR zoning is the maximum that they could anticipate.
All right, so if you split it, three, created three lots, five acres each with a couple acres somewhere, you couldn't split it because of the five-acre maximum requirement.
I'll have to ask you.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead.
Trevor, you were also gonna clarify the water question, you had said, someone...
You had said that someone?
I have a question.
Sorry, somebody asking that?
Yeah, Linda. Linda Kennedy has a question relative to water. I have two questions relative to water. Was work done in terms of availability of well water for the area? And on another note, is that not in a flood plain when Washoe Lake floods? Was that considered in any of this discussion?
Through the chair again. And I'm not sure if that was the question that you were going to ask as well. Commissioner Doncheck, regarding the water rights, again, the issue is each new parcel that's created, the applicant will be required to demonstrate adequate water rights. They would have to go on the open market and purchase the water rights. Now, we did, with this request, we sent the application to the state water resources. And there were no red flags or concerns raised by state water. Same thing with the Washoe County Water Expert in the Capitol Projects and Engineering. No concerns were raised in that regard. In regards to the second question that Commissioner Kennedy asked, this property is not identified according to our maps within a flood zone. It's identified as most suitable for development. Now, many of the surrounding properties do have more constraints, whether it's within a flood zone or a floodway or even potential wetlands. However, there were none identified on the Washoe County Development Suitability Map for the subject parcel.
I have a question. Or I have a statement because I'm very familiar with this. Owning water rights does not guarantee there's water in the ground. Was any work done to justify the addition of three more properties for enough water in the ground to increase that much water retention for this area?
Those issues are very closely monitored through the state water engineer. They determine the availability of water within each of the hydro basins and within the state. And so we defer to their expertise. Again, the planning department, we don't have the water expertise to answer that question. So we defer to the experts that do. I hope that answers.
Did they respond to this request?
They did, but they did not identify any concerns that would raise a red flag for this proposed request.
Was that the end of your question, Linda?
Yes, thank you.
Another.
Okay. I think, no, you're good. All right, go ahead.
Could I make one more comment regarding my statement?
I'm sorry, sir, we can't right now.
Commissioner Phillips for the record. Is this decision in the water rights in the future up to the state water engineer or Toma?
This is outside of Toma's service territory, so it would be up to the state. It would not, Toma would have no jurisdiction here.
Anything? Do we have any more questions? Do we have any discussion on this?
Excuse me, regarding the water. It's very. It is not time for public to be making comments and outbursts. Please refrain. Thank you.
Do we have any discussion on it? No. Okay, if we don't, then I'll entertain a motion.
I got it.
Go ahead.
I think I think we have to refocus on why we're here. I asked the yield question because that seemed to be a major concern. But there's no parcel map here. So granted, if this is approved, I wouldn't be surprised if there was a parcel map coming most rickety tick. But it's not for discussion or consideration tonight. What is, is are we going to modify the zoning and the master plan? And I think we need to focus on that. Even though we have all these other issues, what are going to be addressed? If anything new develops with this parcel of land? So that's my two cents.
Yeah, we have to focus on what we have right in front of us. We can't speculate on what's going to happen in the future.
If we had a parcel map, that would be one thing that we don't.
Yeah, out of our parameter.
Regardless, it's still only going to be three parcels if it's approved. So it's not going to be four. It's just, are they going to be five? If we have no other discussion, then I will entertain a motion or two. Go ahead.
Commissioner Flick?
Go ahead, sir.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that after giving reasonable consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing. The Washoe County Planning Commission adopted a resolution contained in Exhibit A of the staff report to amend the master plan as set forth in the Master Plan Amendment Case Number WMPA 23-0005, having made at least three of the following five findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110, decimal 820, decimal 15, parentheses D, close parentheses. I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed master plan amendments in WMPA 23-0005 as set forth in this staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Planning Commission. I'd also like to make the second motion.
Go ahead.
If that's agreeable to the chair? Or do you want to vote on this?
Let's vote on that one first.
Okay.
And so we've got that. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Nelson, no second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Linda?
Nay.
Nay? Okay. All right, let's go with the second one.
Yes. Okay, I move that after giving reasonable consideration.
Point of order for the chair. Can you ask if there was any opposed for that previous motion?
There was, Linda said nay.
I know, but she said nay during the motion to approve.
Okay, yeah, so.
So can you just clarify that, please?
Just for point of clarification, all those in favor, please say nay.
Aye.
Or aye, sorry. Say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Okay.
Thank you.
There you go, sorry. All right, go ahead with the second.
I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Planning Commission adopted a resolution included as Exhibit B, recommending adoption of Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number WRZA 23-0007, having made all the following findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110, decimal 821, decimal 15. I further move to certify the resolution and the proposed Regulatory Zone Amendment in WRZA 23-0007 as set forth in this staff report for submission to the Washoe County Board of Commissioners and authorize the chair to sign the resolution on behalf of the Washoe County Planning Commission.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Nelson, no second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Thank you. That one passed, both of them.
Mr. Chair, if I could read the appeal procedure?
Yes, please read the appeal.
All right, most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with a decision of the Planning Commission and qualify as an agreed person or party, you may appeal in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is reduced to writing filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-3610 for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
All right, thank you. All right, that moves us on to item number nine, Chair and Commission Items, Feature Agenda Items. No? Request for Information from Staff? No? Yes? Did you have a request for information? Okay. Moves us on to 10, Director and Legal Counsel Items, Report on Previous County or Planning Commission Items. Mr. Lloyd?
I'm sorry, can you please take the conversation outside, please? We still have a meeting in progress.
Guys, can you please, we're still in a meeting here. No disrespect intended, but we need to be able to hear. Thank you.
Also, please don't linger in the lobby. They are voting and the registrar would like them to have their privacy. So thank you. I have a couple of items to mention. The first is that the first reading of the DCA, the Code Amendment for Wood Creek up in Incline, that was read and is scheduled for February 20th. And the second item is the one we're all celebrating still is the Regional Planning Commission on the 25th. They approved for a conformance review, the envisioned Washoe 2040. It is now official after three long years. So that's worth the cloud.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all.
Cool, thank you. Legal information or updates?
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Okay. Can we open it up to general public comment, please?
You may.
You may, yeah.
First and last name for the record, please. You have three minutes.
And then you got to fill out a card when you're done.
Thank you. My name is. Thank you for considering this. Definitely disappointed regarding your vote, especially because we do live in the.
One of the most affected properties there. Trevor, can I talk with you after to get a picture of your appeal process? Just because, you know, we have four horses. What the easement that Mr. O'Connor is trying to push through with us is to move the easement to our southern property boundary, which would require us to move our barn and our horse runs out there. And it just isn't workable for us. So like we said further, it's gotten a little contentious, but we're not trying to prohibit him from building his dream property. We just want to live there. And I think like some of these other neighbors said, like we live in this area because of the rural nature of it. We lived on Marinatha Road for nine years prior. And Gus Bundy's house, which is one of the original properties in Washoe Valley, was built with telephone poles, you know? So it's like we, I'm from Carson City, love the area. It's just the concern is like a lot of hypotheticals that obviously you couldn't consider today. But, you know, who knows? You know, we got a biker gang down there, you know, just a lot of traffic. It's concerning for everybody. So thank you for your time. I know that was a difficult decision, but we'll try it again with the county commissioner. Thank you.
Yes.
Just state your first and last, thank you. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Bailey Bybert. Sorry, super nervous. Just to be on public record, I live at 3,000 old US Highway 395. We are the L-shaped property. So we do do cattle grazing on ours. So we have the nine acres. That land is extremely swampy. So the concern is with what crew coming in, how that's going to mess with the cattle, you know, with the sewage when you're building that many homes, the liability exposures. So the more people you have come in, the more people are trying to touch our animals. So, and that's liability risk for us, which is why we're spread out the way we are. So I would just hope you guys would have at least considered that. I'd also like to know how we can maybe dispute this a little bit. But, you know, it is a rural area. So to make that more developmental, I would think that would be more north than what it was here. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any more public comment?
I have no more public comment in chambers, and I have no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, with that, we will call the meeting. 7:24, meeting is adjourned.